All right, good evening. We are reconvening from closed session and there is nothing to disclose. Therefore, I will adjourn the special meeting. It is 6:00 PM. And that will take us over to the regular Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Like to call that to order. Today is Wednesday, February the ninth, 2022, and it is 6:00 PM, Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person, so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may be necessary. For this meeting, this meeting, the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel fourteen on Friday, February eleventh at 1:00 PM, and Sunday, February thirteenth at 6:00 PM. It is being closed captioned. It will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Pursuant to Resolution Number twenty ten dash two four, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. In the Zoom environment, a speaker timer will be displayed, counting down the three-minute time. For callers connecting direct via telephone, they can utilize the raise hand feature by pressing star nine on their phone. Then the city clerk will run a speaker timer, and after that first two minutes have passed, a single bell ding will sound to inform that one minute remains to wrap up comments. When the total three-minute time concludes, a series of bells will sound. When we are in the teleconference environment, for any of our items, such as a roll call or a vote that is cast, we will be taking those verbally, audibly, or audio, and so I will be starting out the roll call for our council, starting with Councilmember Wen. And let me look to see. I do not think Councilmember Wen is in our listing of staff, although he is absent. Then moving to Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sun.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
With four oh, we have a quorum.
All right, next item. We have our Pledge of Allegiance. If we can pull up the flag. Please address the flag and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And at this time, please join me and observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, Section Two, Approval of the Agenda, and I did want to make a note that unique to meetings with public hearing discussions on redistricting or the process of redistricting, those redistricting-related public hearings have set posted times for when the discussion commences. Item eight point two is going to be a public hearing that's related to redistricting, and it has a stated start time of 7:00 PM. So, Counsel, I would ask that as you go over the approval of the agenda, just to make that kind of footnote that we may advance in time the discussion of item eight point two if the meeting runs close to that seven o'clock hour. If we're in the middle of anything, we can wrap that up, but we do want to try to stick to that 7:00 PM start for item eight point two. Thank you for that consideration.
All right.
Hearing that, I'll move the agenda. Hume?
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
Motion and second.
And with the motion and second, that roll call vote will go to Councilmember Wen, who is absent. Oh, it sounds like you arrived, so sorry about that. So I have an I for Councilmember Wen, and then going to Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sun.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
With the five oh vote, we have an agenda before us.
Great, next item.
Under Section Three, there are no closed-session items on the regular agenda, so that we'll be advancing us to Section Four, our presentations and announcements, and that first being item four point one, which are Proclamations in Recognition of Black History Month.
All right, great. Can we pull up the proclamation, and then I will read the entire proclamation, and there are unique shout-outs to our two honorees this evening, so I will read those separately as well. If you want to pull it up, that would be great. "Tonight, in honor of Black History Month, we are going to be recognizing two of Elk Grove's finest, Sandra Poole and Sam Starks. Whereas in nineteen twenty-six, Carter G. Woodson laid the foundation for Black History Month to dedicate an observance of the contributions, accomplishments, and achievements of Black Americans, a history that previously had all but been erased from national history and underrepresented in important policy decisions. And whereas since nineteen seventy-six, February has been designated Black History Month as a time in which especially memorable events are recognized and celebrated, honoring and affirming the importance of African-American history and culture as an essential element to the foundation of American history. And whereas Black Americans for generations have courageously led the pursuit of justice and equality to overcome the past injustices, yet still moving forward, taking on the challenges to advance reforms and break down barriers as we strive as a community to live by the principle that all people are created equal." And I'm going to read some special shout-outs here for our first honorary, Sam Starks. "The City of Elk Grove recognizes Sam Starks, Executive Director of MLK three sixty-five for his dedication and contributions to the Elk Grove community and Sacramento region. And Elk Grove resident Sam Starks has tirelessly worked to honor the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by organizing an annual March for the Dream event and year-round programming under the MLK three sixty-five nonprofit organization. And MLK three sixty-five is Sacramento region's largest and most diverse MLK event and draws thousands of participants each year. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the City of Elk Grove, hereby affirms and proclaims February twenty twenty-two as Black History Month in the City of Elk Grove, and we thank Sam Starks for his commitment to the community, signed this day of February twenty twenty-two." I will now read some for our next recipients, and then we'll pull them up and acknowledge them individually. Our next recipient is Ms. Sandra Poole, our Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. "Whereas the City of Elk Grove recognizes Sandra O. Poole for her dedication and commitment to the Elk Grove community and the Sacramento region. And Sandra O. Poole is the city's first Black female planning commissioner and brings her professional and life experiences to the table. And Sandra has held several positions with nonprofit organizations supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion programs, which have helped eliminate health disparities and has encouraged support for mental health and suicide prevention in underserved communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims February twenty twenty-two is Black History Month in the City of Elk Grove, and we thank Sandra O. Poole for her contributions to our community, signed this day, February ninth, twenty twenty-two." Congratulations to two amazing, amazing Elk Groveans. At this time, I will call on, I see Ms. Poole, you are ready to go. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Singh Allen, also to Vice Mayor Sun and councilmembers. First, I just want to say thank you for this recognition. I am truly honored and humbled to receive this proclamation for frankly doing something that I love, and that is serving my community. Service is in my DNA, something that I modeled after my late father, and I continue through several organizations, including my sorority, who is committed to providing service to all mankind. I just also want to take this opportunity to thank the council for the confidence you had in me to appoint me to the planning commission. It has truly been a joy to work with my fellow commissioners and city staff on projects to enhance the quality of life in our beautiful city. It's wonderful to live in a city that not only talks about equity, diversity, and inclusion, but demonstrates daily a priority to incorporate these principles. So again, I say thank you, and I look forward to continuing to be of service to the City of Elk Grove.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Poole. You are such a dynamic, dynamic community resident, and you have really elevated the planning commission. I've heard nothing but wonderful things from other commissioners that you are truly a rock star on that commission, and wanted to congratulate you on your appointment as the Vice Chair. You are doing tremendous work, and just thank you for all that you do, not just on the planning commission, but what you've already historically done.
Thanks.
We'll go to Councilmember Spees.
All right, well, Commissioner Poole, I want to say thank you. You know, I've been a planning commissioner myself. It was my first, you know, public position like that, and, you know, it's not always easy to to balance the needs and the interests of other folks, and sometimes the decisions weigh a little bit heavy, right? And so I want to thank you very much for bringing what you do to the planning commission. And so, thank you so much. I'm glad we have an opportunity to honor you today.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to reserve just some general thoughts about Black History Month until after Mr. Starks has an opportunity to speak as well. But I just want to say, Sandra, you impressed me from the, I think I've told you this, I've told the mayor this, I tell just about anybody that I'm talking about you this, that you impressed me from the first time you applied for city office. And I'm so happy that there's a place for you to provide your knowledge and your desire to serve in such a great way. And I too, as the mayor has intimated, I too have heard from other commissioners, and having been a commissioner, know what the job entails and that you've just really stepped up your game and brought it to the table, and so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Wen?
Thank you, ma'am. So Commissioner Poole, I echo everything that Councilmember Spees and Councilmember Hume says, but I want to also add that it's been such a joy to see you out there in the community and seeing all the great work that you do. So in addition to being able to serve with you on Elk Grove City Council as you as a commissioner, it's just been nice to see your beautiful face out there and your smile out there in our community. So thank you so much for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. Similar to Councilmember Hume's words, we remember seeing your resume and glad we got the opportunity to get you on here this time around. And I just want to acknowledge just the way you've been diving in to the role, as others have alluded to, you know, just coming out with such a great spirit and humbleness and just a learning, having a learning spirit. I think I'm glad you're finding joy in it because I really think you're made for the role, and we're so happy to have you on there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to welcome Mr. Sam Starks.
Still muted, Sam.
And Mr. Starks, yeah, you just want to hit the unmute.
Okay, all right. Well, I was saying, you know, it's not a good thing to follow Sandra Poole in a speech. I don't have a nice speech like that, you know, and my pearls, you know, I'm like, you got me as I came, you know, but thank you. I'm humbled. And Mayor Bobby Singh, you know, you know, I'm a fan of yours as well, you know, you and Darren and Stephanie and all you folks. And I see Don over there and Kevin and, you know, of course, Pat, you know, you guys are all fellow travelers in this road to try to make this world, this city, a better place. That's really at the, you know, that's the goal. That's the end game, you know, how do we make our local communities better? Better for everyone, not for the majority, but for everyone. It used to be that the majority, we made it right for the majority. Do you remember those days? And when it was right for the majority, it wasn't right for everyone. And so how do we make it right for everyone? And that's really what is, that's what we're working towards. A more perfect union is, I can hear President Obama say. But I am, I am here. I'm, Lord willing, not going anywhere until that work is done. And then when it's done, we'll still have some work to go before we sleep. And so what else could I say but it's great to have a wonderful city council committed to, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion. It's wonderful to have such fellow travelers on this journey towards a more perfect union. And I have to throw out my five beta sigmas, eternity brothers, because she had to throw out hers. Because we don't do it alone. And I accept this very humbly, and then I distribute it to all the people who actually do the work. And those of you who know my better half, my better whole, Shar Starks, it wouldn't have been, you know, she should really be here. I'm the one who's just accepting on her behalf, and so I accept this on her behalf and on the many volunteers over the forty-two years, the people, some here and some gone, that have made this happen for our region. And so, and the thirty thousand people that walk. So on their behalf, I accept and thank the city council.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Mr. Starks. Let's start with Councilmember Hume.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just want to say that much like my comments to Ms. Poole, Sam, when I first met you, I think it was in an RT meeting back when we could still gather in person, and you just bring such a presence into the room. I don't know that you could have found a more perfect calling for your spirit. You know, obviously, you have very connected reasons as to why you are attracted to Dr. King's legacy, but you carry it on with such grace that it really is not lost on those of us who witness your great work. And then I just want to say generally, before I turn it over to my colleagues, that, you know, there's very little about some of the transgressions in the past relative to the two lived experiences within America that we can correct. But one of those that we can correct is what we teach our children about it and learn about it ourselves. And that's one of the things that I know I appreciate as a life-earning learner, to still learn about the accomplishments of the individuals, many of whom came between the periods that we did learn about of slavery and the civil rights, right? There was a big chunk in there with some amazing people, did some amazing things. And just learning about that is, it's fascinating to me. And most recently, and this will be the final thing I'll close with, because I don't want to take up too much air, but, you know, I just learned this Black History Month that cornrows were used as maps to direct slaves on how to go on the Underground Railroad, as well as hanging quilts out on the fence that would have symbols in them that would look like you're just airing your quilt out. But I mean, just little things like that fascinate me, and it's such a more rich tapestry of our history. And I'm so glad that we're learning it, and I thank both of you for your efforts to help embody that as we go forward.
Well said. Councilmember Spees?
Yeah, so, Mr. Starks, congratulations, and we definitely appreciate the opportunity to honor you today. You know, what most folks recognize about, you know, MLK Day is the march, right? And, you know, kudos to you for, that's a significant effort. As somebody who's, who has done large events, that one is very, very large. It takes a lot of coordination, and obviously it takes a lot of effort. But more so, what's most interesting about it is that, much like the name, people need to understand that this is about three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And so I want to thank you very much for bringing that, keeping that forefront for people to remember. You know, let's reflect each day on what Dr. Martin Luther King had to say and to integrate that into our lives. So, thank you very much, Mr. Starks.
Councilmember Wen?
Thank you so much. So this is really special for me, Sam, because we've known each other, I mean, twenty years, I would say fifteen, twenty years. It's been such an honor for me to be able to be involved in the community with you, and we've walked together. We've broken bread together. I've gone to all of the offices that you've ever worked at to talk about how can we work together? How can our communities join forces and do better for all of our communities? And as you said, just because it works for the majority doesn't necessarily mean that it works for everybody. And I love that you say that because that's kind of what we've done all these years, is figure out ways in which we can work together. And so it's truly an honor for me to be here today, to be able to be a part of this presentation and presenting this to you, just because we've worked together for decades now, and it's really meaningful to me to be here and be a part of this with you, and that it's too bad we can't do this in person. Because I think I would love to give you a hug and just say how much you mean to me, yeah, and how much, you know, I've appreciated you being in my life all these years and all the things that we've been able to do together and just educate each other about our communities, because that, some of the things that you've shared with me has been eye-opening. I appreciate Councilmember Pat Hume for educating all of us about that, because I guarantee you, none of us, and I say none of us as in, many of us as councilmembers, and I'm not sure of the mayor and vice mayor, knew that. And so it's just little things like that that we need to be continued to be, to continue to be educated on. So thank you so much, my friend, for everything you do in the community. And I look forward to continuing our friendship and our work in this community because we need you still. Need to all be together, so thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Sam, we've known each other a long time too, and maybe we didn't work together, but we sure did raise our kids together. And, you know, on that note, we're in the same business, right? We're both in the business of creating a better world for our children and everyone after them. And so I just want to thank you for all the work you've done to keep Dr. King's dream alive. And not only have you done that, you've created a community event that I would say, you know, is, you mentioned thirty thousand people. I mean, everybody gets excited to go to that event. I mean, it's important work, that there's important messages, but I got to tell you, when I go out there, everybody is really enjoying themselves and the spirit that it's about and the activity itself. And so bringing people together, doing, you know, what Dr. King mentioned about brotherhood, you know, promoting justice and brotherhood. I mean, you've done a great job in that, and so we want to continue supporting you in that effort. It's just an honor to know you, my friend. I hope our kids see this. In fact, I'm going to send it to Lauren and Mariah, or Lance and Mariah, and we're going to make sure they see this honor for you. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Happy Lunar New Year to you.
Thank you.
Sam, 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 where do I begin? I think I've actually known Sam the longest. We go back to nineteen ninety-four in the trenches of shaping our community on the grassroots level, me working for Joe Serna and you working for pretty much everyone. And on that grassroots advocacy, organizing and leading, holding our electeds accountable back in the day. And you continue to do that work. You continue to inspire. You're a mentor in so many ways. And yes, your better half as well. I have the privilege to also work with Shar in my capacity as a school board trustee. And as a lifelong learner, I know that the work continues every day. It continues with all of us. Because in order for us to create that more perfect union and a truly welcoming city where all of our residents feel welcome, that's work every single day. Because there are those in our community, our Black American community, that sometimes feel marginalized. And I know that, and I understand that, and I'm ready to do the work, and I know my colleagues are as well, so that we can do better and always be better. And it's always with that, you know, that strive to be better and do better, particularly for our young children who look to all of us to lead the way, our children in our schools. And, you know, a lot of the work that I helped start on the school district continues to this day of bridging those gaps between students and law enforcement and our school resource officers. We've changed administrative policies to create better relationships with students and SROs. That work continues, and I'm so proud of that. That work continues here for all of us, not only as mayor, but my colleague. Because we want to be more than just those great soundbites that we hear. It's that MLK three sixty-five, three sixty-five. Actually, I'm looking at a portrait. I have a nineteen, it's an eighteen by twenty portrait in my mayor's office of Dr. King, and it's one of my favorite quotes, of course. Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that. Those are principles that I hold dear, but I want to be more than just a quote. I want to do that work. So the legacy that you've created, that three sixty-five, not only the wonderful event, but it's that three sixty-five where all of us can and should do better, so that we create that more perfect union and create that truly inclusive city. So I mean, continue to be inspired by you and your dynamic wife who does great work as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion. That's a power team right there. So just want to thank you both. Thank you, Sandra. Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Shar, and everyone else on this occasion to celebrate not only Black History Month, but recognizing two of our finest in our community. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Happy Lunar New Year, everybody.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will go on to our next item, please.
The next item will be item four point two, which is receive an update on the Delta County's Coalition and the Delta Conveyance Project, aka the Delta Tunnel. I think we just have some housekeeping here, though we've elevated our presenters up. I am available if you want me to do the share screen, so I can make that happen as well. But I'd like to bring in Osha Meserv, Natasha Drain, and Sacramento County Supervisor Dawn Natoli.
Mayor, I'm, due to my employment, I'm going to, don't feel comfortable participating in this conversation. I'm going to go ahead and log off.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, it would help if you would share your screen, Mr. Spees? Or who's, there we go. Thank you. Hi and good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for having us here tonight to share with you the work we're doing in support of the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta and its communities. I'm Natasha Drain, the county's Director of Government Affairs. I also serve as the coordinator for the Delta Counties Coalition, or the DCC as we also refer to it. In this role, I help facilitate the work of the Coalition. Next slide. I have with me tonight Supervisor Dawn Natoli, who, as you know, serves as the Chair of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, excuse me, as well as the Chair of the DCC. He'll speak tonight to the work that he does with the Coalition. We also have Osha Meserv with Solari Meserv, who will discuss the Delta Tunnel project. Next slide. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Supervisor Natoli.
Great. Well, thank you, Natasha, and good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Before I make some brief comments and introduce Osha Meserv, just wanted to extend my congratulations to Sandra Poole and to Sam Starks. As you all said so eloquently, they are guiding lights in our community, certainly in the Elk Grove community, and to their example, and their good deeds and their words really do, I think, make a difference in our community. So it's a real treasure to be able to hear you, recognize them this evening, and certainly the comments to the work that all of us are a part of, certainly in whatever role, and their leadership has been stellar, so congratulations to them. I'll be brief, but I just, by way of background, again, thank you for some time on your agenda this evening. And I know that as we conclude this, that Natasha will, you know, wrap it up. But just by way of background, the Delta Counties Coalition is, was formed some, more than thirteen years ago now, and was now a growth of what was then proposed as the Delta Reform Act and various iterations of what was known as the Big Delta Conveyance Program, BDCP. But also it's for representation on matter important to the Delta and counties across the Sacramento, San Joaquin, Solano and Yolo. Came together around a common theme of, uh, certainly the importance of the Sacramento, San Joaquin Delta as a watershed, but as a, uh, environmental treasure, as a. Uh, significant agricultural region, both in our state, but certainly, uh, in our country and even, uh, renowned throughout the world, uh. And, uh, being the, uh, largest estuary, uh, uh, on the, uh, west coast of the Americas, uh. We felt it important to, uh, I think, uh, emphasize representation for, uh, this, this region and the more than four million residents that. Are, are a part of the, the, the five Delta Counties. And, uh, over the, over the past, um, uh, more than dozen years, uh, we've worked together on matters that certainly relate to. Water policy that relate to, uh, the preservation and protection of the Delta, uh, certainly its people, but also. Oh, it, it's importance both in, uh, water, uh, water quality, water transfer, but what it means to, um. Uh, to, to this, uh, part of the state, but also obviously to California as a whole. And so we've, uh, devoted our efforts, uh, certainly in representation on. The Delta Protection Commission, which all five counties are represented, the Delta Conservancy, again, which all five counties are, are represented. And, uh, by virtue of the fact that the Chair of the Delta Protection Commission, uh, is a member of the Delta Stewardship Council. Uh, are one of seven members of, uh, of a state, uh, agency that, uh, is also given charge for, uh, you know, overseeing, uh, activities, uh. Uh, as it relates to, to Delta, uh, in many different aspects of that. So the work is ongoing. Uh, it's, uh, very important work and I know that. Certainly members of the council have tracked this from, uh, from time to time and, um. But I think the seniors' presentation will focus in on obviously the aspect that, um, uh, is, uh, of great importance as we've advocated for. A portfolio of, of, um, uh, different approaches that we believe would, you know, bring more certainty to, uh. Water and obviously, uh, all the various aspects of what it means to daily life, certainly here in our communities, but. Uh, from north to south and east to west in California. And, uh, have weighed in, uh, on principles that we believe, uh, are in good adherence to. You know, whether it's conservation or development of, of water storage, uh, strategies that would, uh. Help create, uh, sources of water that would i- improve reliability for not only, uh, this part of the state, but for our state as, as a whole. And, uh, we have also been pretty staunch in our, uh, concerns, uh, as expressed, uh, in, in different iterations of. What you're going to hear about this evening, that is water transfer and conveyance. And we've made it pretty clear, our, our concerns regarding isolated conveyance. And the need to improve Delta levees, which there's eleven hundred miles of levees in the five counties, uh. Water quality and what it means to, um, to our communities, but certainly to the state. So with that, I won't go any longer. I know that, uh, Osha Mazzur. Uh, you're going to hear from in a moment, uh, has tremendous background and she, along with Natasha, my colleagues on the Boards of Supervisors in the, uh, four counties, uh, uh. Certainly including Sacramento County, uh, were strongly united and have worked together over the course, as I said, of more than a dozen years and. Uh, some of that work is reflected in what you can hear this evening, but, uh, we welcome your questions and thank you for the time and, uh, I probably went longer than I should have, but I wanted to provide some background for. Uh, for the, uh, what you're going to hear about next. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Osha Mazzur, who has. Great depth and background in matters Delta and has represented, uh, uh, some of the lands in the Delta, some of the reclamation districts, uh, is very knowledgeable about environmental law. And, and, uh, water impacts. And so with that, I'll turn it to Osha. Thank you again for your attention this evening and for giving us time on your agenda.
Thank you Supervisor Natale. Um, maybe we could just go to the next slide where we did have the priority goals of the. Delta Counties Coalition. Um, and thank you clerk for doing the slides. Um. Again, my name is Osha Mazzur and, um, I've actually been working on Delta issues since, uh, two thousand eight. And I know probably Supervisor Natale goes before that. So it, it has been a very long, uh, struggle really to try to protect the California Delta, which. Elk Grove is so close to and is really your backyard. Um, so we're very pleased to, you know, try to. Coordinate with you on behalf of the Delta Counties Coalition. And then, you know, as Supervisor Natale mentioned, I work with a lot of other. Uh, entities in the Delta on protecting the Delta and agriculture in particular, as well as the communities. Um, so, but I understood was that, you know, the city council would, would like, uh, an update on kind of what the tunnel is, just for some basics. And then that might parlay into, you know, other actions later. So that's what I'll try to provide, uh, here. Um, so just go to the next slide. Um, as Supervisor Natale, um. Indicated, there's been a lot of names for this project and some of the people that I've worked with on Delta issues, you know, go back into the. Early days, the peripheral canal. Um, when you drive down I five, you will see those long, um, rectangular pits. And that was actually the beginning of the peripheral canal was begun, um. Um, prior to Seacoast Passage. And then it was stopped when there was the, um, referendum on that project. So. Um, then there was the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, Water Fix, and then now it's called Delta Conveyance Project. Um. And, uh, we could go to the next slide, which kind of shows what all of the different projects, no matter what they're called. And I've just taken a lot of slides from things that the Department of Water Resources has put out, just to try to show you quickly and, um. Succinctly kind of what, what the proposal is so that you will be up to speed on it. But all of them, if you look at that inflow, um, picture. You know, most of the fresh water coming into the Delta is coming into the Sacramento River. San Joaquin River used to be a lot bigger and, but it's got so many diversions on it that it really doesn't put that much fresh water in the Delta. And that's coming in way down at the south, um, anyway, of that little squiggly line that you see at the very bottom right corner. So what the tunnel does and what DWR, that which is Department of Water Resources. Is, is saying is, yeah, they take that big flow and they put it through that dotted line there. Um, so any of these ways that we would take a lot of fresh water out of the Delta at what. We consider to kind of be the top of the Delta from a, from a perspective of fresh water. Really has a lot of impacts through the rest of the Delta. And, um, on the next slide. Um, you can see the different routes that the DWR is studying right now to go, um, to divert the water from. These diversions, which they're quite near to Elk Grove. Uh, one intake is proposed at Hood. So if you would go down. Um, Hood Franklin Road, you get to Hood and then also just south of there from Portland. And each of the intakes would be almost a mile long. Um, and then it's about forty miles or more to the location down where it can hook into the existing, uh, state water project. Right now, the Bureau of Reclamation, or what's called the Central Valley Project, is not participating in the tunnel project. That's a difference from, uh, back in the days of BD CP. Um, as well as Water Fix. So, um. It would take about, it's, it's a massive infrastructure project. I, it's hard to even imagine the size of it, you know, just compared to other types of infrastructure projects that we may be familiar with. But forty miles, forty foot in diameter, buried a hundred and fifty feet down. And it would take probably about fourteen years of construction. A lot of the facts I'm going to give you today are based on the prior version of the tunnel project. Which was slightly different, but, you know, it gives you a basic idea and then we will be hearing more about the specifics of. The Delta Conveyance Project this summer when the draft EIR is released. Um, so I think one of the big impacts that's really direct for Elk Grove would probably be the truck trips. There's just a lot of heavy truck trips associated with having an infrastructure project of this size. Um, it, you know, I think DWR has been working to try to reduce the number of truck trips, but I know traffic is already pretty tight on I five and. Getting around that area can be very difficult. So, um, that's, you know, something that you'll want to keep an eye on as you study this project. Um, I think very notably, the project really has not ever and still does not include any local benefits for Sacramento County. For your city, for any of the communities. That's never been the, a plan for this project. And so. And then the cost is estimated to be sixteen billion. Um, theoretically, that would be borne by the water, um, contractors that would get the water from this large tunnel. Um, and that, you know, I think a lot of public money has already been spent on the planning and whatnot, but, um, it is supposed to be beneficiary pays. And, um, we can go to the next slide. Um, this is a mock-up from the prior version of the project that shows what the intakes might look like from the river first. So for those of you who have been out on the river. You know, you can kind of cruise along the river and you're seeing the levee and the, um, trees and whatnot and the farms on the other side. And. So this would kind of be similar to what it would look like from the river. Um, and, you know, so I think promoting recreation and bringing people into the Delta is obviously something that. Um, you know, the DCC and many others have been working on for a long time and we're very concerned about. The visual impacts as well as the water quality impacts of taking what could be about half the average flow of the river. Um, if it's six thousand CFS and if the river often flows at around twelve thousand cubic feet per second. On the next slide, you'll see this, the Delta Conveyance Project is being marketed by the State Water Project and others. At, you know, for the benefits it would bring to water, to those who do rely on water from the Delta as part of their, um, water supply. And I think something that everyone that I've been working with on the. Opposition to the tunnel agrees on is, you know, we, we all support reliable water supplies, obviously having water supplies go to those who need it. Um, there's a lot of. Um, injustice out there in terms of, um, that issue. However, um. One of the things that's notable about the marketing for the Delta Tunnel is that. You know, again, no benefit to water supplies and it, and it actually detrimental to water supplies locally because when you remove so much fresh water, you end up with. More saline water coming up into farther into the Delta. Um. And then, um, in the next slide, I mentioned the traffic. This is just a diagram that kind of shows how. DWR thinks they may be, um, accessing that, um, Hood intake. And so they're saying they'll try to run most of the traffic on Lambert Road. You see Hood Franklin Road's right there and that runs right through the Stone Lakes National Wildlife Refuge, which is kind of, you know, a very important, I think, amenity for Elk Grove res- residents. On the next slide, um, this is just showing a little closer in how that sets down right on top. You can see the town of Hoods right there. Um, and so it would basically become a huge construction zone and be changed forever, you know, under operations as well. And then on the next slide, I have just shown like a big work area that is proposed for at Twin Cities Road, so just south of town. Um, and if you look at the next slide, you can see they're actually intent, uh, planning to put a huge stockpile of what. DWR calls reusable tunnel material and we call muck, um, piled up in that location. And they don't really have a. Plan for what to do with it later. Um, so it would be a huge visual and other impact and there may be stability concerns and other things. But I just tried to pick some things that are near Elk Grove so you could get an idea. Um, on the next slide, I mentioned some of the concerns about water supply reliability locally if this project was ever built. Um, you know, having really huge diversions changes the water level of the river. That also reduces recharge to the areas next to the river. You're there in the South American Sub Basin and of course you're regulated under Sigma or, um. And working on reaching sustainability there. So any less recharge from the river is a concern. In addition, it worsens water quality in terms of salinity when so much fresh water is taken out of, um, the Delta farther up. Um, and I mean, I think one concern about the water quality is that. DWR is saying, oh, well, we would operate it. We would take big gulp, little sip. We would take big sip, you know, big amounts when there's a lot of water there, but. You know, if, if DWR has the ability to divert water and locals like such as cities and counties don't have any say so on when that happens. No, I don't think that there's a lot of trust there that, oh, they would only take when say there's flood conditions or something like that. So that's a big issue is operations as well. Um, and if we go to the next slide, um, as I mentioned, you know, everyone in the area really appreciates the wildlife of the Delta. Stone Lakes is right there. These are just some pictures of some of the birds and wildlife that we see there. There's also a big proposed transmission line. Um, that would be co-located to some extent, but would also pose a big threat to birds. And so that's an ongoing concern. And, um, in the next slide, I show that, um, Santa Clara Valley Water District is one of the big proponents of the tunnel, along with Metropolitan Water District to some extent. And then all the state water contractors who are, you know, thinking they may participate. And I just, I think it's interesting and important that even at Santa Clara, Clara Valley Water District. They've identified the Delta Conveyance Project as one of the highest risk, highest cost projects that they could. Use to meet their water supply reliability needs. So I think that's a, a big important point out there is that. Locally, we support everyone getting water supply reliability, but that there's these other. Options out there that make a lot more sense from a lot of, um, perspectives. So, um. And then on the next slide, I show the timeline and I think that's why it's so wonderful that you asked us to come and, and give you an update is that it's really the right time for local governments to. Become more knowledgeable and hopefully get involved in protecting the Delta. Um, there will be environmental review document, um, in the summer likely. And I think Delta Counties Coalition, the counties individually, and a lot of other entities will be reviewing that. And I think we'll be looking to, um. You know, for, to, to form an even larger coalition than we've had in the past. Um, so we hope that, uh, Elk Grove can be part of that. Um, and then on the last slide, um, I just have a cute meme. So with that. I will turn it back over to Supervisor Natale or, uh, Natasha.
Okay. Well, thanks, Osha. I'm gonna let Natasha wrap up, but again, um, certainly we're available for questions. And again, this is. You know, a, a, a quick introduction. There's a lot of, uh, substance behind what Osha has described and, you know, and again, certainly. Willing and, and able to provide information as, as needed, but, uh, we are working to build the coalition and certainly our. City leaders and, uh, other leaders and other, uh, realms of local government. Uh, water is essential to life. The Delta is, is. Is a key part of our region and, uh, is awesome in many ways, but it's environmental, recreational, agricultural attributes, along with. The fact that it does serve as a conduit for movement of water. Uh, we think there's a much better way to approach this and that has been our message and theme for. As I said, for many years now and, uh, thank Natasha and Osha for their work. And, uh, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor and Council again for allowing me to be a part of the presentation. So Natasha, I'll turn to you for concluding comments. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor and thank you, Osha. And both, uh, Osha and the supervisor alluded to this. Um, we obviously like Elk Grove's support in the work that the Delta Counties Coalition is doing. And we hope to bring back to you at a future date for the council's consideration, a resolution, um, in support of the Delta Counties priorities, but also of course. Um, or I should say priorities in addition to, uh, the work we're doing here on the tunnel. Um, that's all I wanted to conclude with and I'm happy to turn it back over to the Chair. Or the Mayor, excuse me.
Thank, thank you Supervisor Natale, Natasha and, um, and Osha for that, uh, presentation. I'll turn to my colleagues for any, um, questions or comments. Uh, we'll start with, uh, Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I'm glad to see that this is so timely because I just happened to have, uh, been down in the Delta and had the, uh, the. Su President Follias is giggling at this. I've been down in the Delta quite a bit recently. And, uh, they, you know, obviously are very concerned about this and wanted to see us, um, you know, throw our two cents into the, into the political arena. With respect to the impacts that this will have. And I, you know, I, I want to say, uh, relative to the, the DCC and your, your two priorities. In your goal number two, it talks about a new water supply. This tunnel is not a new water supply. It is sticking a larger straw in an existing glass. And, um, and it just, it's, it, it's a tragedy to think about the impact that this will have. And for people to, to wrap their heads around this, uh, you mentioned, you know, it's half of the flow of the Sacramento River that they would be, uh, that have the capacity to siphon off. But, you know, to put another terms, think of the entirety of the American River, um, that we see from Sacramento. All of that water gone. Um, and it's, it's, um, so anyway, I, I'd just like to say that, uh, you know, I, I, I would like to see that resolution come back. I would be in support of it. I think there are a lot of tangible impacts to Elk Grove as construction happens. It is in our backyard, as, as was mentioned, and I just want to throw in with these five counties to say this Delta is special and it shouldn't continue to be preyed upon for what I see as, as short-term needs. We need to find more long-term sustainable solutions. So I look forward to that resolution coming back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hume. Councilmember Spees?
So I want to thank you very much for bringing a presentation to us today. You know, from an emotional perspective, I, I said it a hell no, right? However, you know, it, it is important to learn what it's all about and what it means and what it's actually doing, you know, a little bit of the science behind. So I appreciate you bringing that. And I look forward to it coming back as a, as a resolution, opportunity to learn more about it. So thank you very much for your time tonight.
Councilmember Wen?
Thank you. So I, I too want to thank you for this presentation and this opportunity to educate us on this because I can guarantee you that most of our general public doesn't understand how harmful this could be to us. And so I look forward to, you know, getting an update, hearing more about this. I think this is the first time I've ever seen a presentation and heard about it. I've, I've heard about it before in the past. We've read about it, but just getting a more detailed with pictures and giving us more clear, better idea of how this could be really detrimental to us as a region. And as Councilmember Hume said, this is right in our backyard. We have to do something about this. So I would be in support of that resolution as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for that great presentation. This is near and dear to my heart because my family owns a farm out in the Delta on Grand Island. And then my house backs up to the Stone Lake Wildlife Reserve. So very, you know, we've been talking about this for, for a number of years. And thank you for breaking it down into a manner that will be easy to understand for the general public. Because the politics of it can be very confusing. And so I appreciate how you presented everything and I, of course, could be supportive once it comes back. And I do think this is incredible information here worthy of sharing. I don't recall, if, if you don't mind, you can send us a copy of that presentation. I'd love to have that. Because there was just so much really, there's, there's great information in there and as we prepare for the next round. But again, this is something that my family has been watching very closely for, for various reasons. Not only the family owning over 200 acres in Grand Island specifically, right there at the heart of this all. And all of the species that are impacted and, and the farms and the families and everything. So I appreciate tonight's presentation. Thank you. Any closing words?
If I just could, Natasha, maybe share, because we, you know, there's, I think, again, thank you all for your comments and for your attention. And, and I would just say that there's, you know, information, you know, comes out really regularly on this. And there are different junctures at which it's going to be important to, to weigh in. And I think that, you know, information wise, certainly make it available on your website, you know, obviously in the action you would take. But there's a slideshow this evening and there's some additional information that the Counties Coalition has put together, you know, and advocating for a portfolio approach and for what we think are much better solutions as counties and representatives in concert with, you know, our city leaders and others to, you know, address the issues of statewide water reliability and environmental protection, but also that don't sacrifice the Delta as spoken to by, you know, several of you. And so Natasha, maybe you can point out what those, if there's websites or we can forward that to the, you know, to the Mayor's Office and make sure that's available to, to council members and to the citizenry as well.
Yes, I, what I'll do is send that information over to the clerk and the city manager's office so that that can be shared with the council. And we have quite a bit of information, but we'll keep it brief for you and for the public. But we definitely have some materials that we'd love to share with you.
Right.
And we, we can even offer tours. Obviously, many of you are familiar, just, you know, of your own travels and family affiliations and work in the Delta. But we've offered that. I think Natasha was out earlier today with some folks, just, again, I think giving whether it's the water side or the land side, talking with local landowners and those stories are pretty compelling. So that would be helpful to you or city staff. We can certainly arrange that in concert with your schedules. So we'll just put that offer out there. Thanks again so much.
And if you need any families or other folks you need to network with, I'll connect you to several of our surrounding farms.
You bet. No, that's, that's, okay, there you go. Thanks again, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Mayor, Members of the City Council, Cara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. I'll work with Natasha and come back with a resolution at a future meeting. And then we can also put some information on our website with our action. And if any of you want to take a tour, just let me know and I can help coordinate that.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come and present this.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli.
All right. With that, we'll go on to our next item, please.
And we'll put out the call for Vice Mayor Soon to return with us. Where we are, I would like to put out there, we have a pending deadline coming up of seven o'clock for the discussion. But what I can do is see from our attending audience, the interest to speak on general public comment. We had a large number of speakers. We may want to consider moving the general public comment until after item eight point two. But if we have just a speaker, we've got time to fit him in. So far, I see one speaker under general public comment, Mr. Mark Graham. Council, would we like to proceed?
Yes, if you don't see any other hands raised, then let's proceed.
Yeah, folks are starting to raise their hands.
Okay, then we're gonna have to wait. Given that we're at 56.
Yeah, we're getting pretty close to the start time of seven o'clock for item eight point two.
Have our Vice Mayor back? If not, we can maybe take one speaker.
I'm back.
Okay, great. The Vice Mayor has returned, so let's, why don't we, so that we're not sitting here with dead airtime for four minutes. Let's take one caller and, and use the time wisely.
We do have a call for Mr. Mark Graham. He did actually submit slides to accompany his comments, so I'll pull those comments up as well. And then we will, you won't see the speaker timer, but that'll be running in the background. So let me pull up his slides and then we will start with Mr. Mark Graham and staff will start pulling him over.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and Members of the City Council and Staff, Mark Graham. I'm returning to the question of the smart city and how many radiation transmitting antennas the city will allow to be installed in pursuit of the smart city. I mentioned in my public comments on January 12th that this will happen and nobody on the council or staff disputed that claim. The only dispute was initially from Councilmember Hume and he said that he wholeheartedly believes that there's a very small percentage of people that suffer from an affliction when exposed to non-ionizing radiation. And we don't know what that's caused by. And most people don't suffer from that affliction. Councilmember Spees and Wen chimed in and said they agreed. With all due respect, that is not true. I and several other residents presented voluminous scientific research on EMF health effects to the council in 2018 and 2019. I realize Councilmember Spees and Mayor Singh Allen, you were not on the council at the time. Could you move to the next slide, please? Let's go to the slide number five, if you could. So as best I can tell, it just appears that the council members have forgotten. My intention is to remind you, two weeks ago tonight, you got reminders from about 10 different people and you'll get a couple more reminders tonight. These, this is something that I showed the council at the community workshop held in council chambers on November 28, 2018. The council held this community workshop to learn about cell antenna policy and what the risks and hazards and pros and cons would be. So you can't say you've never seen this information. Could you see the next slide, number six, please? He's talking about the path of physiological effects caused by non-thermal microwave frequency EMF exposures. And so he's got, now I sent you a document by Martin Paul, PhD, and these are, these slides are excerpts, very short excerpts from that. And I'm asking the council members to put, put this on your reading list, your list of things to read for city business because it directly affects decisions that you will make that will affect the city and will affect your residents. I want the city council to be well-informed so that you can serve the city well and serve your residents well on this subject. I commit to reading this entire 90-page document by two weeks from tonight for the next council meeting. And I ask you to make that, consider making that same commitment. Next slide, please. We are up to three and four, produces oxidative stress and free radical damage. These are bad things, but the point is, we do know that these are the well-documented health effects from exposure to non-ionizing radiation that is so-called non-thermal, which is well below the limits that are set by the federal government. And by the way, those limits were set in 1996, have not been updated since then. And recently, US Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit ruled against the FCC and said, you have failed to consider the recent, the research since then in your reassessment and you must go back to the drawing board and consider all the non-cancer research which you have ignored. So next slide, please. These are more of the health effects. So in other words, when the council says these health.
That'll be the three-minute time, Mr. Graham.
Was that it? Okay. I thought I was gonna get a one-minute warning. All right. Well, thank you, Council.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. All right, we will transition to our other presentation to meet the seven o'clock requirement.
And thank you for that, Mayor and Council for item, what we will be doing for those folks. And I know we do have an attendee who had a raised hand, but we do have an obligation under state codes, which is that we do take the item related to redistricting at seven o'clock after concluding those comments that were being made right prior to that time. So that is advancing us to item eight point two, but please caller, please, or attendee in our environment, please stay on. As we get after this item, we will go right back into general public comment and provide you that opportunity to speak. For item eight point two, this is a public hearing, providing a demographic overview based on 2020 census data and updates on the redistricting project. And what I'd like to do is quickly move to introducing our representatives from National Demographics Corporation. And we should have the status over to you. I think we have both Mr. Douglas Johnson and Mr. Douglas Yocum. And I will give you the co-hosting so that you can share screen and carry on with the, the demographics for us.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. As I just mentioned, Doug Johnson from National Demographics and joined by Doug Yocum. And, and it's our pleasure to be with you. As you may recall, NDC has worked with the city a number of times now on districting and, and redistricting projects. And I'm happy to say actually Mr. Yocum is indeed a resident of the city as well. So very familiar with the city and its neighborhoods. This is the next step in your redistricting process. As you know, you've been briefed a couple of times on what was coming and, and now we have some numbers to show you. So let me jump to our fairly brief presentation. So, so first of all, one of the key things to know is that the rules for redistricting have changed. So the state has passed something called the Fair Maps Act. That it, so these rules and criteria are different than what you've seen in your past districting and redistricting efforts. So the federal laws are still the same. Those still come first. And we, they are, we have to have an equal population, an equal number of people in each of the districts. We have to make sure that the districts comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act and that they do not dilute any protected class population's ability to elect their preferred candidates. While at the same time, being sure we don't racially gerrymander. So race can be one factor that's considered, but cannot be what the court calls the predominant factor. So those are the federal laws. Obviously, those come first and we have to comply with all of those. And we'll work with your legal counsel and be sure that all the maps that come before you either comply with those requirements or have a big stamp on them saying this is a concern. The new set of rules is in the middle. It's California's Fair Maps Act. So California set out this prioritized list. So first on the list is that the districts must be geographically contiguous. Second, on the prioritized list is that the districts must avoid dividing neighborhoods and what the law calls communities of interest as much as possible. So a community of interest is defined as a socioeconomic or, or other linked area that shares an issue, concern, or characteristic that benefits from being kept together in one district. So wherever possible, where those are identified, we do need to be sure to keep each of those together. The third on the prioritized list is following easily identifiable boundaries. So where possible, we want to follow railroads, major roads, rivers, things like that. They're easy for the residents to, to know where those lines are and to understand the boundaries. And then the fourth requirement under state law is that the districts be compact. And the state has thankfully defined what compactness means, which is we're not to bypass one group of people to get to another more distant group of people. So those are the requirements of state law. There's also a prohibition, which is that the district shall not be drawn to favor or discriminate against a political party. So the way we stay safe on that point is we simply don't look at partisan data as we're going through the process. So those are the state and federal statutory requirements. Once you have maps that meet all those requirements, then you can start to bring into your deliberations other traditional redistricting principles. These are things the courts have recognized as acceptable considerations and sometimes viewed as goals of redistricting, but they're not requirements. So these are kind of optional considerations. Number one is you can try to minimize the number of voters who shift from a district that where they expect to vote in 2022, but they get delayed to 2024. Nobody loses the right to vote. They just sometimes shift from the first year to the second year and some will, will go the other way. And so you can prefer a map that minimizes that as long as it complies with the higher statutory requirements. Similarly, you can look at where the council members live in an attempt to respect the voters' choices and to avoid creating head-to-head contests. This is often misconstrued. It's really for the voters because it leaves the reelection decisions on the current council members up to the voters. Instead of telling voters, if the line moves in the wrong place, it doesn't matter if even the voters want to reelect both members, you can. So that is one consideration, not a requirement, but one allowed consideration. You can also, to a very limited degree, consider future population growth where an area that you know is going to be higher population growth can be underpopulated, but only by a couple of percent. We're talking two or three percent. So you can accommodate that to a very limited degree. And then the last traditional redistricting principle is all other things be equal. You can revert a map that keeps the core of the existing districts together. The idea of this is that the residents in the district have worked together. They've knocked on doors, they've networked and organized for past elections. So if you keep the core of those districts together, you're allowing those networks and those organizations to continue to work together in future elections. Again, that third column is just principles or goals and they all come after the state and federal requirements. In terms of the Voting Rights Act, what the Federal Voting Rights Act looks for is geographic concentrations of what the law considers a protected class. And a protected class in the law is Latino, Black or African-American, Asian-American, or Native American. We don't have a map of Native Americans because the numbers are a very small percentage of each given neighborhood. So there is no geographic concentration. But in these maps, you know, I'm sure most of the people in the city and certainly the council are somewhat familiar with these. For the Latinos, you get, you can see the higher concentration of, of reds and yellows and, and greens right in the middle of the city. There's a square there that has that. And then a little bit up in the northwest area. For Black and African-American residents, it's definitely over in the west end of the city. We get up in the, the 35 to 50% in a couple of city blocks. And then, of course, in the bottom, you see the, the very large Asian-American community in the city. It really is concentrated in like four different pockets, in the west, the southwest, in the north, and then the southeast. We know, there's no need to, to string a long skinny district together to put different pockets together. What we need to do under the law is not divide any one of those pockets internally. So we want to keep each of those concentrated neighborhoods of, of a protected class together. That is all to keep in mind as you consider compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act. And of course, if we see a concern, we'll flag it for you on that. Which brings us to your existing districts and the, the big number is, of course, the population numbers. At this point, you can see we've calculated the total population data down at the bottom. We work out to a goal or an ideal population of just under, just over 44,000 people per district. And as you look down, either on the map, you can see the percentage above and below that percentage, that target. And in no surprise, given the growth over the last few years, District Four is way over, over by almost 27%. And no, the negatives on the other districts don't mean they've shrunk. It simply means they haven't grown as fast as the, as the city as a whole. So then we've got District Four with extra population, so we will geographically need to shrink and give up population in the other districts. And then one, three, and two all need to. And then One, Three, and Two all need to geographically grow and take in more population to bring themselves up to balance. And so, this, today is really just kicking off this process of how we'll come to maps. We don't have draft maps for you today. But if you do have guidance on ideas that you want to share with us today of how those draft maps should be drawn, we're welcome to that. And of course, as you know, your city clerk is doing an extensive outreach effort to get the public's input on that as well. So, we'll be taking all that into consideration as we come back to you later on with some draft maps.
Thank you. Is there anything further on the presentation before I open up the public hearing?
I think from the staff perspective, I'd just like to say thank you to National Demographics Corporation for being available this evening and kicking us off in royal fashion with just some of the numbers and for us to see those kind of images for the demographics. In terms of the staff updates, we are moving into high gear that next week we'll really start the meat of the communications with our city committees and commissions. And from the outreach that will continue to go, we'll be setting up dates towards the end of February as to when we will see some workshops. We will be using both the teleconference environments as well as looking at opportunities for in-person, whether those are outdoors, wherever I can find a Wi-Fi signal, or if we are allowed to congregate indoors again. But what the goal of staff is to make environments that are comfortable for our resident participants so that we will have a variety of those offerings for how they can meet and congregate and use some of the tools. The city website is getting updated. And as we get more tools online, we are providing those up onto the city website and then sending out those notices to our interested parties for being able to play with the tools that are coming out there for drawing with maps. Like I've said in past presentations, we just have an unparalleled amount of technology that really is going to help making connections throughout this process, whether it's teleconferencing or map drawing tools in order to allow people to not just go from pens, papers, and calculators, but really just with a brush of a mouse, it adds up numbers and gives you a sense of evaluation and validation of the maps that are being proposed. But without too much further ado, I also want to provide the opportunity for counsel to ask questions of National Demographics Corporation, but also for our attendees in the audience for public comment on item eight point two.
All right, then at this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity.
And for the unique element to this, this is the public comment opportunity for item eight point two related to redistricting. And so, for any of our folks that were signed up under general public comment, we'll take that in the next segment. But for right now, that would be for item eight point two. Mayor, vice mayor, and council members, there were no written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting in relation to item eight point two. As I look over our list of attendees, I do have a speaker with their hand raised up to speak for item eight point two. I will pull up that speaker timer now.
Katie Mickey, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
My intention is to make general public comment out of the redistricting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that, but we will be back to general public comment soon. And then I believe we do have another speaker signed up.
Mark Graham, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, council members and staff, Mark Graham. This is obviously a big project, and the city has invested a significant amount of time and effort into it, and it sounds like it's going to continue. It sounds to me like the reason the city is doing this is that you are required to. I'm not sure about that, but I do remember at a previous council meeting before the pandemic, there was an attorney who's an Elk Grove resident who said, I believe there was a lawsuit against the city that said that the city's present voting, you know, districting plan was somehow in violation of law. And can you clarify whether that is the reason for this redistricting item that we're, that we have on the agenda tonight? I, basically, what I want to say is, please do the best job you can to make this plan available as a draft, not just when it's final, and solicit and be receptive to the input from your constituents. Lord knows how many people will have an opinion on this. They'll have, more people will have an opinion on it when they're informed as to what the plan will entail and how it will affect their rights and their frequency of voting and, you know, who they can vote for and that sort of thing. It's a big deal. It's a big deal, and I think voting rights are super important. It seems to me that the city agrees and acknowledges that. So, and, you know, thinking of the Smart City Plan, there were some good principles in the Smart City Plan. And the number one, one, number one principle that stood out to me was to be responsive, that the city and the city council will be responsive to your constituents. And this is a perfect application of that principle, you know, with or without a Smart City Plan. Frankly, I consider that to be part of the job description when you get onto the city council. But now that it's, you know, made official by the Smart City Plan, let's do that. So, yeah, let your residents know what's about to happen, and please solicit and be receptive to their input. And please take it seriously. That's all. Thank you.
Any other callers?
And I believe that concludes the public speakers on item eight point two.
All right, at this time, I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is closed. I'd like to invite out our city attorney to provide any clarifications based on the speaker's comments.
I'd be happy to. The speaker suggested that a lawsuit was filed with respect to voting rights. That's not correct. No lawsuit has been filed. There was a claim a while back that the city's maps might violate the California Voting Rights Act. That was simply a claim. There was no lawsuit filed. It was never litigated or much less proven that that is the case. And this event tonight has nothing to do with that. This is a regular redistricting that happens every ten years.
Perfect. Thank you for that excellent clarification.
And mayor, vice mayor, and council members, I can reach out to Mr. Graham and give him the link to our online resources about the process and about how this gets kicked off every time a census comes around. And we'll make sure that he provides, he has opportunities to join in the process.
And if we can provide that same information through our city newsletters, I believe we already have, but not so that it's not just going to one person, but all. Because the idea, again, is to be inclusive and create opportunities for all residents as we have outlined in your presentation last time. So, thank you for that. I will turn to my council colleagues for questions. Let's see, no one's raising their hand, so I'm just going to go down the list. Councilmember Spees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Yeah, this is an extremely important process required for us to do by federal law. So, of course, we're going to take it very seriously. So, thank you for getting us started and appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a kind of a general comment to make relative to that third column that was presented in the slides. And the comment I'll make is this. I recall the last time we went through a districting effort, there was a version of maps that was referred to as the, you know, layer cake map or birthday cake map. I don't remember what it was, but essentially, it took the districts across the whole length of the city. And I guess I'll sum up my comments thusly is that the rural area on the very eastern edge of Elk Grove, I am worried that is going to be diminished in representation if there is no stake over on the other side of the freeway. And so, I think as we look at keeping those communities together, as we look at the, again, that third column of things that we're trying to do, that there's an opportunity to maybe expand the reach of the folks within the rural community to have representation.
Councilmember Wynn?
Thank you, Madam, and thank you, Mr. Johnson, for that presentation. I've been involved in and watched through several redistricting maps. And so, really excited to have it finally come to our city and be a part of this. Well, as you all saw, you all lost some folks in your district, and they all moved to District Four, it seems like. Because we had a huge growth in District Four. And I hate to see that we have to split some of District Four up. But, you know, looking forward to this conversation. And, you know, I'm a big supporter of keeping our communities of interest together, those that have similar commonalities. And I hear what Councilmember Hume said because we had discussion, this discussion when we talked about going by district several years ago, that was one of the options that we looked at. It's going to be really difficult because as we cut the city up and have the districts drawn, if we draw it like a layer, and I actually was supportive of that until I figured that that doesn't necessarily keep our communities all together as a whole, as one. What it does do, though, and what I really like about it, is that it has representation from all of us as council members to see every part of our city. And so, really interested in this conversation and how we could make this so that it works best for our city. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to thank both you gentlemen, both Doug's, for the information tonight and articulating the legal and the, I guess, best practices versions of these maps and the maps and how they're drawn. So, look forward to the process as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So, just a quick comment as it relates to our outreach process. Oh, Councilmember Spees, I see your hand raised.
I can wait. I didn't mean to stop.
Oh, go ahead. I'll do it.
So, if we're talking a little bit about, you know, design preferences, one of the things that I find unfortunate about District Three is that it breaks over ninety-nine. And I recognize that, given, you know, the way that the population is across ninety-nine, that that likely will not change. And I'm not suggesting that it shouldn't. What I, what I would suggest is that I wouldn't like to see that happen for District Two. I wouldn't like to see it have the same challenges that District Three has. So, just, you know, a bit of a, you know, a bit of a design thing. I'd prefer to see District Two remain on the east side of ninety-nine, even if that means District Three has to give some up on that other side. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Excellent. So, for me, at first, the outreach, since the face mask mandate will be lifted next week, hopefully, we have more opportunities for that in-person, whether it's outdoors, indoors, or a combination. But that will lend itself most, I think, to bring in more people and really be able to work with those maps interactively and see how, you know, the colors change and as it populates with the different resident numbers, that will be helpful. So, as the, you know, as we get more information next week, to the extent that we can make adjustments for more in-person opportunities, definitely think that, that, you know, that will create more, more opportunities for our residents to participate, as well as the hybrid version and, of course, online. But I don't want to lose sight of that that may actually be feasible next week. So, that would be great. I do want to thank you for your presentation, National Demographics Corporation. I did follow the school districts' redistricting process, and you did an excellent job there. And I know that the board just recently adopted those maps relatively, you know, wasn't controversial, although I did hear a few groups that perhaps didn't have a stake in our city that raised some concerns that they don't actually live here. Sorry, I remember, I think the group's name was Communities for a New California. Never heard of them before. So, and I don't know if you happen to know what their issues were. I didn't really fully understand what they had a problem with in terms of the maps, and they wanted to delay the implementation to next week. Were they hoping to get one more meeting, or did they raise something that you needed to reexamine in terms of the maps itself?
Yeah, you're right. Part of the reason we know the area is from working with the school district also a couple of rounds. And no, that was just a group that showed up last, kind of at the end of the process. I think, I could be wrong about this, but I think they're a fairly new statewide organization. And we didn't reevaluate any data or have to change any lines because of any concerns they raised. I will say, they're, we're actually working with them in Indio. They are also active down in Southern California, and there they got involved, started the process and submitted a map and things like that. I think this was just kind of, they were getting organized and wanted to-
Okay, so it's not a community-led group or something like that, even though the name is Communities for a New California, which implies statewide. But since I had never heard of them before, I was curious. Yeah, so, I mean, the maps there relatively not controversial, had tremendous inputs, keeping communities of interest together, school boundaries, the feeder pattern schools, and so many things that go into this redistricting process on the education side of the house. I definitely am looking forward to see how this shapes out. I am intrigued by Councilmember Hume's concept of that cake layer. That's interesting because then that really would sort of empower council members to have broad-based understanding from the east side and the west side and everything in between. And I appreciate the comments about the rural community not losing their voice. But I would say that would be true for even the west side and probably other, you know, other parts of our community. So, I definitely look forward to being a part of this process, but I'm mostly looking forward to hearing what the community has to say. And I love our approach that we have with our existing committees and commissions as natural stakeholders to provide input. So, looking forward to seeing the maps that they come up with and other community folks, residents. This is your opportunity to shake those boundaries. And as a mayor, I have to represent the whole city. So, I'm definitely interested, and I see benefits of some of these different lines of, even what Councilmember Spees said. So, important work ahead of us, and I'm glad we only do this every ten years. So, thank you for your presentation. I look forward to hearing more. Thank you.
And I think if I could just hop in real quick, Mayor, just to respond to your questions about in-person meetings. Your city clerk did get to do some fieldwork. Unfortunately, I picked two of the coldest, windiest nights to go out into the wilds of Elk Grove. And it was pretty cold out at the food truck events. Also, those are more oriented towards parking facilities, not so much facilities that have a lot of Wi-Fi support. But it gave me a lot of great ideas. I think what will be targeted is that week of our council meeting, when we have the meeting on February twenty-third. There's a couple of dates during that week to start out the process, which more than likely will happen at locations such as District Fifty-Six, if not around the city council chamber, then out at our Old Town Plaza. But I've also started making connections with members of our community, and we'll be looking for targeted outdoor events, whether it's an indoor venue or an outdoor venue with Wi-Fi, but hopefully to get to Laguna Town Hall, to get out into the Sheldon community, and to get into our various communities that are in Elk Grove and give them an opportunity to come together. And even from coming together, what it is is a shared, a sharing of resources that then we can build and blossom on that teleconferencing for groups that need just a little bit more follow-through. But basically, it's putting the power in our people's hands to draw these maps.
Great. All right, well, looking forward to it. Thank you. So, we'll go back to our general public comment.
I'll unmute myself, but that will shift us back in time, back to our Section Five, general public comment. And thank you, everyone, for accommodating our state regulations for redistricting. That's just a process that's part of the new law package that came out that was referred to by National Demographics Corporation. But this is where, thank you for your patience, for our speakers. I will pull up the speaker timer, and we will go from there.
Katie Mickey, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, Elk Grove City Council. I am a member of Safe Technology of Santa Barbara County, and I'm joining your local advocates for safe technology in Elk Grove. And I'm here to encourage you to use the full extent of the law to limit the unnecessary and irresponsible placement of small wireless antennas in consideration of the wildlife in your delta and city. Becoming a smart city entails the placement of thousands of small wireless facilities saturating your residence and your delta with radiating radio frequency. Leading national attorney Andrew Campanelli cites that wireless carriers will install eighty-nine antennas when one is needed to satisfy the requirements of the Telecommunications Act to fill any- to fill any significant gaps in coverage. To be sure this is needed, you can require that six months of drop calls be provided by any applicant for wireless installation. Why is it preferable to have one antenna rather than eighty-nine blanketing your city with five G radiation? There are no studies that demonstrate five G is safe. And since wildlife is a, a significant topic this evening, I'd like to bring to your attention. There's a recent report compiled by Abbott Moundfield, a retired U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service biologist and science professor at John Hopkins University and, um, science journalist Blake Levitt. And they have compiled reports on the effect of wireless antennas on wildlife and they've drawn from one thousand two hundred peer-reviewed studies to compile this two hundred and ten-page report titled Effects of Non-Ionizing Electromagnetic Fields on Flora and Fauna. It was published in the Journal of Reviews on Environmental Health. And their compo, compilation invalidates any claim that EMFs don't cause biological effects. EMFs toxic effects on animal cells, DNA and chromosomes have been observed in laboratory specimens and thus would apply to wildlife, according to the report. Many types of wildlife are exposed to EMFs from wireless sources. And many species have been found to be more sensitive to EMFs than humans in some ways. Um, the report recommends new laws that include the redesign of wireless devices and infrastructure to reduce the rising ambient levels. The study notes EMS can disrupt first natural magnetic fields that birds, cats, fish and other animals use to navigate and orient themselves. Towers keep EMFs away from people on the ground but leave birds vulnerable because they fly near the transmitters and even perch on them. Air needs to be designated as a habitat and EMFs need to be regulated like other pollutants. Transmission can disorient bees, causing them to become lost and not return to their hives and die. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please.
And I just wanted to provide another opportunity for our attendees in the Zoom environment. Now would be the opportunity for Section Five, General Public Comment. But as I look over the list, I do not see the raised hand feature being utilized. So with that, I will close up the speaker timer under Section Five.
All right, next item.
Take us on to Section Six, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Jason Bearman, your city manager. Happy to report on some items for you this evening for our community. First, uh, this afternoon, city sent out a press release announcing my decision to appoint the current assistant chief. Bobby Davis is Elk Grove's fifth Chief, Chief of Police, succeeding Chief Albright upon his retirement in March. Chief Davis has more than twenty-five years of law enforcement experience, including twenty-four years with Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. Extremely confident that Chief Davis is the right person to lead the Elk Grove Police Department into the future. He understands the department and values the support and trust that has been built with our community over the years. He is committed to keeping Elk Grove safe through modern innovative approaches to municipal policing, understands the importance of community engagement and partnerships in achieving this goal. Congratulations, Chief Davis. California's mask mandate will expire for unvax, for vaccinated people in some indoor settings on February fifteenth, as recently announced by Governor Gavin Newsom. Unvaccinated people will still be required to wear face coverings in indoor public spaces and businesses. Everyone regardless of vaccination status will still be required to face, to wear a face covering in the following locations, public transportation, um, K through twelve school, childcare centers, emergency homeless shelters, cooling and heating centers, healthcare facilities, correctional facilities, long-term care, as well as children under two years old and people with mental and physical health conditions that prevent mask wearing are exempt from requirements. Individuals who are hearing impaired or communicating with someone who is hearing impaired are also excused. Updates to the county health order are expected to flex states' changes soon. Also staff is prepared to bring back an item at City, for the City Council's consideration at the next council meeting regarding future city council meetings. Uh, City's Public Works Department and IT Departments are preparing to launch a new mobile app next week called See Click Fix Elk Grove. Residents will have the ability to access information and smit that information directly on their mobile app, things like, uh, potholes or, or streetlights that are out or other um, nuisances or concerns that residents might have. So looking forward to officially launching that shortly. Uh, the Sacramento Regional Transit District is seeking feedback about the rider experience and public awareness to take public transit. The two thousand twenty-two rider survey is available through February twenty-fifth in English and Spanish at SacRT.com/survey. A final reminder, the point-in-time count of unsheltered people experiencing homelessness led by Sacramento Steps Forward will be conducted next Thursday, February twenty-fourth. Volunteer canvases are still needed to help capture this crucial community data. The community can register to join the count at www.sacramentostepsforward.org. And finally, in observance, in accordance with the city holiday schedule, City Hall will be closed on Monday, February twenty-first in observance of President's Day. Public Safety and Trash Collection Services will remain on normal operations. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bearman, for that excellent report. Any questions for my colleagues or comments? Raise your hand. If not, we will move on to our next item. Okay, Councilmember Hume.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Not a question. I just wanted to take this opportunity, since it was just announced publicly in the meeting, to congratulate our new chief Davis uh, on his appointment to the position. Look forward to him serving.
Hey, welcome, Mr. Davis. Check you out.
Uh, hi, Howie. Thank you. Um, I just want to say, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council um, and to our city manager, thank you very much for this opportunity. Um, I was able to talk to our organization today, but I want to publicly thank you all, uh, for this opportunity. I humbly accept it and I am genuinely looking forward to this, uh, experience moving forward with our city. Uh, to work in a city that's as beloved as ours, uh, that's as diverse as ours is quite a, um, very, very special thing. And to be part of that, uh, is something that's very unique. I just want to say thank you.
Congratulations again. I have no doubt you will lead our city with great pride and continue to build those great bridges with our residents. I, I've just been so impressed with you being out there. I've seen you at so many community events. You're visible and that's exactly what our community needs, um, in our police chief. Um, we've had great police chiefs in the past and I'm sure you will not only lead the way, but make it unique to yourself as well. So, so excited and proud of you.
You very much. And, oh, sorry.
Sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to jump in. I was gonna wait until council comments, but, uh, really excited and, and happy for this opportunity. Thank you, city manager, for making this appointment and, um, such a, you know, uh, it was first, it was Sam Starks, now it's you. It's a really special day and a special moment for me because both of you I've worked with for, for many years. And so such a opportunity for me to be here, um, with all of you and celebrate this really means a lot to me. So thank you so much uh, for accepting. Um, I don't think you had a choice because we would have made you accept. What's good working with you?
Well, thank you. I'm, uh, again, I'm very excited and you know, I think that, um, Chief Albright, uh, spent a lot of time mentoring and developing me and giving me really an opportunity to come and experience what, um, you as our city leaders have provided our community and, and being part of that is special. And uh, when I had the opportunity to speak with our city manager and I was so blessed and humbled with that experience. And, and you know, I think in the, in the end of that, I couldn't have asked for a better opportunity ever. Um, and so I just, I'm very thankful and I am, I am forever grateful for our friendship. Uh, for the council's support and, and again, for uh, the moment that I had a chance to speak with our city manager, it really meant a lot to me. So thank you all. Thank you all very much.
Uh, Vice Mayor Sam.
Thanks, Mayor. Chief Bobby Davis, I just wanted to say congratulations myself. We spoke a little bit beforehand, but I wanted to offer this publicly and I know you're gonna do a great job. I think, uh, you're the perfect person, uh, to help our, our officers, um, heal during this time. And, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's an honor. So look forward to working with you in the community.
Councilmember Spees.
Oh, so, uh, yeah, so in, in the military, we call it chief select. I don't know if that's what it is, uh, because um, you know, what's interesting is the, um, attainment of, in the military, attainment of the rank of chief is, um, something that's extremely important, um, because it brings with it extraordinary responsibility, right? To take care of your troops, make sure they're equipped, make sure they get home safe at the end of the day. And I am absolutely thrilled, um, with the decision. I'm thrilled that you are a chief select, soon to be chief. Um, because I think you know that. I think you appreciate that. And, um, um, we've got a great PD. We truly do. And I am, I am so thrilled that you're gonna continue on, um, the heritage that we have and the, the standard of commitment to excellence that we have. So, thank you, Chief Select Davis.
I like that. Chief Select David. The other Bobby is what I call.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Spees, so very much. Uh, those words mean a lot.
Yeah, this is such a unique moment that we are in and, um, Councilmember Spees mentioned it a little bit, you know, our community is still grieving. Our PD is still grieving with the loss of Officer Lenahan. And this is when we really rally and come together as a family to not only mourn together, but to heal together. And I'm proud to see that the selection was made from within the family so that we can continue to grow and blossom together. So just thank you and looking forward to, um, continuing to work together. Congratulations.
So much. Thank you.
I see other cameras. I see Mr. Werner, others. There you go. All right. Well, thank you again. Thank you for joining us, um, this evening. With that, we'll go on to our next item, please.
We'll take us on to Section Seven, our consent calendar items. And this would be the opportunity for our attendees in the Zoom environment to use the raised hand feature to address consent calendar items under Section Seven. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members, there was one written comment that was submitted in relation to Item seven point eleven, uh, that was, uh, distributed at the top of the week, uh, to the full city council and staff. As I take my attention over to our list of participants and attendees in the Zoom environment, I do not see the raised hand feature being utilized. And that will conclude public comment for the consent calendar items.
All right, I'll close the public comment oppor, opportunity and, uh, take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
And with the motion, the second for the consent calendar items, that roll call vote will start with Councilmember Wen.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Consent calendar items will pass five oh.
All right, um, we will go on to our next item.
Take us to Section Eight, our public hearings. And as we've already heard of one of those, we will be starting with Item eight point one, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting an addendum to a previously certified supplemental environmental impact report for the multi-sport park complex and Grantline Southeast Industrial Area Annexation. Resolution amending of the Southeast Industrial Area Specific Plan and a resolution disestablishing two agricultural preserves established under the California Land Conservation Act.
Thank you, Jason, and good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, Christopher Jordan. Uh, as Jason mentioned, we have three items for you. It is a mouthful. I'll try to work through these, um, uh, pretty succinctly. A little bit of background for you, as you'll recall, about this time last year, you approved the, uh, specific plan that facilitated ultimate annexation of uh, the land on the south side of Grantline near Waterman. Um, we started moving forward with the development applications in this area earlier last year. Uh, August of last year, you approved the Kubota project on appeal. Um, and we anticipate another project coming forward to the Planning Commission in the coming months. Um, none of what we're proposing this evening deals with land use changes. All the proposed revisions this evening uh, will focus around infrastructure. These revisions have been identified as we're working through the development review process as ways to, uh, be more streamlined and efficient with the infrastructure out there. Um, first up in those revisions are transportation plan changes. On the left on this slide, you can see the current roadway plan layout. And on the right are the post-revisions. Essentially, the changes here eliminate a number of smaller streets that essentially divide the properties. They eliminate cul-de-sacs, uh, create a little more efficiency of the layout for development in these areas. What we've been seeing with development proposals and discussions, uh, with future development here is the need for a lot larger lot sizes, uh, for larger warehouse and distribution uses. Um, so these changes would facilitate that. Um, as part of this, we would change some of the roadway sizing. Um, these are identified in the colored dots on the right-hand side of the graphic. Um, Waterman Road Extension and Road A, as we call it, uh, would be four-lane facilities and the balance of the facilities would essentially be two-lane. We do have a revision in the cross-section for the two-lane facilities for slightly wider sidewalks. Um, and redefining where the limits of the right-of-way are for more efficiency for phased improvements of the roads. On the water infrastructure side, your approvals last year, uh, focused on a broader water system master plan for the project area and analyzing off-site improvement obligations. No off-site improvements are required to serve the project. Um, but essentially the onsite facilities will be sufficient. But that plan only looked at the full build-out of the project area, didn't consider phasing. So we didn't know what the phasing was going to start to look like. Now that we do, seeing these projects come in, uh, we have for your consideration and are working with Sac County Water Agency on the phasing plan for those facilities. And that's identified in the draft specific plan amendments. We're also providing for your consideration this evening as part of the addendum to the environmental impact report for the project, the water supply assessment. Uh, this essentially identifies there are adequate water water supplies available when the Sac County Water Agency service area to supply the project with water within the required timeframe under the law. Uh, this is a requirement of SEQA or the California Environmental Quality Act that this document be prepared and incorporated into the SEQA analysis. So we have that for you. On the sewer side, again, much like with the water and the roadway plan, revisions here to create a little more efficient layouts. These revisions would align the sewer facilities along the roads. Um, we've also identified some phasing as part of this and continue to work with Sac Area Sewer District on those alignments and sizing. On the drainage side, um, and not to get too detailed into this, we're proposing some revisions with the, uh, essentially the service areas or what we call the shed areas uh, for the different properties. Uh, there's some opportunities to create some efficiencies and dovetail some of the early projects together in a way that makes a little more efficiency, uh, for development um, or for the infrastructure and how it will be maintained. So on this slide, you can see what we're proposing is to bring uh, the Kubota project and the balance of the city's property um, that's on the north side of this green line, as well as the full balance of the Triangle Point project on the north side of Grantline outside the specific plan area, but within the same storm drain area. As well as the pending Panatoni project, which is on a portion of the Kendrick property, uh, that's on the south side of this green line. And have all the stormwater from those respective projects and properties flow into a common outfall pipe, which would go out to the existing pond at the Man Ranch. Uh, this facility was identified in the existing specific plans, so there's fundamentally no change here. What we're doing is simply accommodating a larger shed area. Uh, this will allow a build-out for those flows to be more efficient in going down to the pond as opposed to having to send essentially the Panatoni flows back uphill to the existing ditch that's along Grantline and then down the ditch along the railroad tracks. It also allows the Triangle Point project to contain all of its flows within a single drainage shed as opposed to being split and having to utilize off-site facilities over at the International Paper site. Uh, finally on infrastructure, um, because these projects are now getting defined better, we're able to work with SMUD and identify what electrical service, uh, will be needed onsite. All the streets will carry twelve kilo, kilovolt service, which is essentially the traditional service you'd have to power the lights and electrical receptacles and so on throughout a project. Um, but some of these industrial users will likely need higher level service. So a system of above-ground sixty-nine KV lines is proposed. Uh, SMUDs provide the conceptual layout for this. As you can see here, it will tie in um, with the existing sixty-nine lines that go along the main transmission line corridor that's in pink, as well as the sixty-nine KV that is along, uh, Grantline. Um, I will note that under general plan policy, anything less than sixty-nine KV is required to be underground, sixty-nine kilovolt and over maybe above-ground facilities. So there's, uh, no consistency issues with the general plan. Um, in terms of, uh, the Williamson Act, this is, uh, item for you and we started this, uh, back in August, September and brought to you some policies for implementation of the Williamson Act. Um, as you recall from that discussion, the act enables local governments to enter into contracts with private landowners for purpose of restricting specific parcels of land to agricultural or related open space use. In return, landowners receive property tax assessments that are much lower than normal because they're based upon farming and open space uses as opposed to full market value. Um, the Kendrick and Cypress Abbey properties were at one point Williamson Act sites and had Williamson Act contracts. Um, those went non-renewal in the nineteen eighties and are no longer in effect. Um, but as we talked about in establishing those procedures last Um, but as we talked about in establishing those procedures last year, there is an early step required before the contracts are put into place. Essentially, the properties have to be put into what the Williamson Act calls an agricultural preserve. This is different than a CEQA mitigation agricultural preserve where that preserve would last in perpetuity. These can come and go from properties over time. Um, essentially with the non renewals that happened, they were fairly automatic with the county, the county did not come back and remove the preserve designations. So your action this evening would reserve, would remove the preserve from title. Um, and complete the elimination of Williamson Act uh, provisions on these two properties. Finally, this evening in terms of the environmental review, uh, staffs prepared an addendum to your prior certified supplemental environmental impact report. This document considers the changes to the project that I've outlined this evening. And it concludes that the changes themselves are not substantial from what was considered in the supplemental E I R. No new significant impacts or substantial increase in the severity of an impact has occurred. No changes to the physical circumstance that would trigger a new impact has occurred. And there's no new information of substantial importance that wasn't previously considered. So that concludes my presentation, a recommendation from staff in the planning commission is that you adopt the addendum. And the amendments to the specific plan as well as the resolution disestablishing the two preserves. I'm available for questions if you have them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jordan, for that presentation. I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity.
So for our participating audience in the Zoom environment, this would be the opportunity to provide public comments on item eight point one, and you can use the raise hand feature, which is being utilized. And mayor, vice mayor and council members, there were no written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting in relation to item eight point one, I will pull up the speaker timer so that we can receive public comment on the item.
Lynn We, you may go ahead, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Jordan for the report, and I don't oppose this, I think that you ought to approve it. What I do want to just kind of point out is I remember, maybe I'm not remembering it accurately. That when we worked on the E I R for this particular site, we talked about a buffering zone for possible orders, um, odors. Well, I've discovered that Kubota does more than just uh, tractor building. That they also do uh, wastewater treatment plants for recycled water. So I'm wondering if the remaining property still owned by the city is some gonna somehow going to be. Set up for a recycled water plant. And then if it's possible that this uh, plant is also gonna. Move on to the uh, future hundred acres where we're going to then be producing more water from and cleaning up our water from our storm water and our poop water. To provide for uh, provide water for the new housing stock that's going to be where all our ag land once was. And I recognize that the Echo Water Project, which I've been reading about, is supposed to uh, provide some water for farming. But I'm wondering in twenty years from now if we're going to be looking at some different use for that, and indeed. We're going to be recycling water to make it drinkable to provide for houses, it is not a technology that's unheard of. Uh, however, the technology is extremely expensive. Uh, I've been attending some of the meetings regarding water, and I wasn't totally dismissed on this concept, at first it was kind of, excuse me, poo-pooed. But then it was, well, not now, but possibly in the future. So again, I'd like to be enlightened as to what the city property is going to be used for. And exactly what kind of manufacturing is going to be going on at Kubota, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you for your comments, um, any other callers?
Mark Graham, you may go ahead, you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, council members, staff, Mark Graham. Well, I want to second the comments that uh, Lynn We just made, I support what she said. I want to comment on the electrical service plan that you've just seen in the presentation by Mr. Jordan. And what I want the city to be aware of is that there are different ways that S MUD can install both a sixty nine KV. Uh, high voltage power line and a twelve KV high voltage power line, and some of these are safer for the public than others. Um, that it's, I don't know that, you know, the ins and outs of the technology of. High voltage power line, whether it's above ground or below ground, but S MUD knows from their experience. Um, there is an elevated, I believe, twelve KV power line that runs along like twentieth and G Street. And it has caused very significant magnetic fields inside the homes of the houses along that street. Um, one of those residents, a couple, it was so. It, it affected their health so badly, in particular the woman, that they had to sell their house and move. But be- before that, they had multiple meetings with S MUD, they did their research, and they found out that there are ways that S MUD can. There are mitigations, there are steps that S MUD can take. To minimize the amount of stray voltage and stray magnetic fields that come off these high voltage power lines, and S MUD was simply not willing to do that. Now, the, it, it was probably more cost efficient to do that at the time when they're initially putting in. The high voltage power lines than twenty years later or, or something like that, so I encourage the city to work with S MUD and encourage S MUD to take every step that's uh, practical. And you don't need to know what they are, because S MUD does know what they are, to minimize the stray voltage and the magnetic fields that these high voltage power lines will cause. Um, in this area where we're talking about. Um, it's part of a commitment to the health and well being and the safety of all your residents, and I know that every one of you in the council and the city manager shares that commitment, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Graham, any other callers?
And I'm not seeing the raised hand feature being utilized by our attendees in the Zoom audience, that'll conclude public speakers on item eight point one.
All right, I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. Uh, Mr. Jordan, did you want to address any of the comments before I turn it over to my colleagues?
Yeah, I think I can clarify a little bit for uh, Ms. Sweet on her comments, um, for the Kubota project, my understanding and um, maybe Mr. Wilson, maybe. Uh, Mr. Wilson can clarify or, or correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but while Kubota is a corporation. Um, does do a number of different things, including tractors, they have a pumping and pipe. Outfit that they uh, operate, this facility will exclusively be for their tractor operation, it is final assembly of equipment and distribution of that equipment. Uh, and parts and services across the western United States. Um, I'm not aware of any uh, piping or pumping. Uh, apparatus will be constructed there and certainly no treatment of wastewater will occur onsite as part of the project, that's not covered in their uh, project approvals. Um, there's no recycled water plan for this area, um, the area she was referring to with the recycled water service. Um, is on the west side of Highway ninety nine, um, some of the developing areas, south of Oprah Boulevard are planned for that, portions of. Uh, within the west have existing service, and then there is the uh, Echo Water Recycled Water Project, um. The Harvest Water Project, excuse me, that's uh, south of Cammer. Uh, that Regional San is working on, this area is not planned for that service, as to whether recycled water be utilized regionally at some point, I'd have to defer to Regional San about that. Um, so I think that covered all of her comments, I don't know if there were others you wanted me to address. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, you're muted.
Yep, no, I just wanted to give you the opportunity uh, based on what you heard, so thank you. All right, um, any council comments? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll move, uh, staff recommendation for all three resolutions.
Okay.
Second, Spees.
We have a motion on a second.
With the motion and the second to adopt those three resolutions of item eight point one, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Wen.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Soon.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Those three resolutions of item eight point one will pass five oh.
All right, next item.
As we already passed the seven o'clock hour and heard the public hearing for item eight point two, at that time, we'll be advancing past that item and on to section nine, our regular agenda action items and recommendations. And that item is item nine point one, which is consider an ordinance repealing and replacing Elgro Municipal Code Chapter sixteen point one two zero deferral of certain impact fees. And amending sections on timing of collection of the fee and consider a resolution establishing the impact fee deferral program. And those policies, guidelines and procedures.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, um, Luis Aguilar, Economic Development Specialist. I'm pulling up this slide, just trying to see if you can see it.
We can see you're the PowerPoint, you're in the kind of design mode, if you want to go to the, perfect, there you are in the slide mode, please, please proceed.
Again, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, I'm Luis Aguilar, your Economic Development Specialist, and the item in front of you tonight is uh, related to the impact feed deferral program. And uh, there's two actions for you tonight, um, staff recommends that uh, council receive information and take the following actions. Uh, the first action is to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only. An ordinance repealing and replacing Elgro Municipal Code, Chapter sixteen point one twenty, deferral of certain impact fees. And amending section sixteen point nine seven. Point zero five zero, timing of collection of fees, uh, the section, the second ac- action is. To consider a resolution establishing the City of Elgro Impact Feed Deferral Program and adopting the policy, the program policies, guidelines and procedures. I wanted to start by uh, providing you with some background information on the current Impact Feed Deferral Program. This program was created by, by ordinance in two thousand eight. And it was to stimulate development during the nationwide recession. As a result, uh, the chapter sixteen point one twenty was added to the municipal code to create the program. Uh, while the program was originally uh, set to expire after two years. Um, the program was successful in incentivizing development and council extended it for uh, for uh, in addition four times, and so. What this led to was council removing the sunset provision and making it an ongoing program in twenty eighteen. Now let me remind you of the current program components, um. Commercial projects can be deferred for up to five years with no interest or payment for the first three years. Uh, repayment commences at year four and concludes at the end of year five. For these commercial uh, projects, these are fixed and are not subject to increases or any recalculations. Um, repayment, repayment security is required for both commercial and residential projects. Um, the market rate residential projects can be deferred for up to two years. And interest accrues at the beginning of the deferral period. And uh, payment is due at the end of the year, year two. The fees for this uh, for these type of projects are subject to increases and are recalculated at the time of repayment. Now let me go into a few uh, bullets, uh, highlighting some results for the existing program. Um, since it was uh, adopted, the program has uh, completed seventy four feet deferrals, and this includes both commercial and residential. And that totals an amount of eight point nine million in deferred impact fees. Um, this has resulted in a construction of over two hundred thirty homes, adding seven hundred ninety five thousand square feet of commercial space. And bringing in and um, a, a construction value of sixty million dollars. Um, this has also resulted in estimated two thousand three hundred jobs added to our economy. Currently, we have uh, five uh, feet deferrals. Uh, that total one point four million dollars, and these are all for commercial projects. So staff now recommends removing the program from the municipal code and adopting a similar program by resolution. Uh, the reasons why we're uh, recommending this is because we want to have consistency with all economic development instead of programs, um, currently they're all. Um, set as policy through resolution and are not in the code. Except for this one. Uh, we want to have greater flexibility to respond to projects, project needs or, or market conditions. We also want to create the ability to be more targeted and flexible in the use of the feet of furrows, and I'll explain uh, more of that in the next slide. Uh, we also want to make it easy for council to make changes to the program uh, when warranted. So now, I want to go over some key similarities and changes in the new program. The deferral periods and, and repayment timeline will remain unchanged for both commercial and residential projects. The interest fee, uh, the interest uh, free period is eliminated. Um, there's also change in the authority levels, uh, the city manager will have authority to defer fees. Uh, to defer uh, fees up to five hundred thousand dollars. And any, anything in excess of five hundred thousand dollars will require a city council approval. I did want to uh, note that currently the city manager has the authority to execute all deferrals regardless of the amount. In terms of prioritizing deferrals for high impact projects, uh, we are recommending uh, that these projects. Uh, are those that employ a significant number of people, uh, have significant capital investment. Um, generate taxes, have elevated or innovative architectural design elements resulting in diversification of housing types. Another change is that the city manager is also granted discretion to substitute impact fees where. The city council eliminates or updates fee programs shortly after it deferral commences. The program will continue to be part of the uh, Office of Economic Development in coordination with uh, the Finance Department, so we would continue to manage that. There are certainly financial impacts because um, the program defers impact fee revenue for up to five years. Um, there's also the risk of non collection. A way that uh, we mitigate, mitigate, mitigate this risk, sorry, um, is by uh, requiring the security upfront. Um, uh, the, the program, the use of the program would also um. Increase tax revenues of unknown amounts because it's, it's inducing new development and uh. Also wanted to point out that the fiscal impacts of any deferral will be a key factor in granting or denying any deferral. And this will be done in um, made in consultation with city manager, finance director and economic development. And for those deferrals that are in, in large uh, quantity amounts, uh, those will, will be at the discretion of the city council. So for alternative actions, city council could decline to amend the municipal code. Uh, and, and. And not establish a new program, and, and so there will be no changes. Um, the other action, alternative action is that the city council could provide alternative direction concerning the current or new programs. Again, uh, the recommendation uh, is presented here, uh. For the sake of time, I'll just uh, leave this slide there, but I'm available to answer any question.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity.
And this would be the opportunity for our members in the Zoom environment to address item nine point one under public comment. Mayor, vice mayor and council members, there were no written comments that were submitted in relation to item nine point one prior to the meeting, as I take my attention to the list of attendee participants in the Zoom environment, I do not see the raised hand function being utilized. And that's going to conclude the submitted public comment for item nine point one.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity. Any council comments? Otherwise, I will look at a motion, yes, I see Councilmember Soon, Vice Mayor Soon.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, first of all, I want to uh, clarification, uh, Louise, thank you for that presentation, by the way. It, um, the interest rate, uh, part of it is no longer, and could you remind me what, what rate it would accrue at, is it? Is it pegged to a certain?
Yeah, so um, so it's um, either two point five percent or uh, the local agency formation of the fund, uh, delay fund.
Okay.
Whichever is greater.
Okay, thank you very much, yeah, I, I uh, I'm glad to see this thing ma- made permanent, I think, you know, business risk, whether you're commercial, residential. A lot of these times, these impact fees are required to be paid at what they call final map or a building permit, meaning you haven't even built. The facility yet and says, which sometimes can take, you know, if you're a single family home, can take six to nine months, if you're a commercial building, you know, longer, and so. Uh, the amount, and we're talking, you know, and I realize this is a, we can only control the impact fees, we, the city. Uh, govern, you know, govern those programs, but in general, you know, folks are paying, you know, sometimes close to a hundred thousand per residential home. And many times more that for a large commercial facility, so. I, I think it demonstrates, further demonstrates the, the good business partners that the city is uh, in this regard, trying to work with. People that are willing to take a risk in coming to the city and setting up shop here and allowing them that opportunity to be successful. Uh, at the same time, you know, we're uh, are taking on a little bit of risk ourselves. But uh, as Louise mentioned, there's security in that uh, in that payment upfront, so. Uh, with that, I, I will wholeheartedly support this, this program and uh, happy to make the motion, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Spees.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Aguilar, I wanna, I wanna thank you, I appreciate you, your presentation this evening, um, and I'm, and I'm supportive of it, one of the things that I like the most. Is related to the um, accrual of interest.
at the beginning of the deferral, right? I mean, I, I think it's great to do deferred, um, in order to stimulate, you know, projects that we want. But at the same point in time, um, that's free money, right? And I think that our, that money should be working for us as well. So I appreciate that. Um, I appreciate that improvement. Thank you very much. And I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Hume.
So I'll third the motion, but somebody needs to actually read the, uh, by title only, uh, section. I will echo the comments that have already been made, uh, Luis, and, and certainly, uh, you know, supported this program when it came forward as an initial idea, supported, uh, taking the sunset off. And, and I support that, uh, a lot of the comments that Vice Mayor Soon, uh, made, relative to the purpose of this and, and the investment it drives. And I also appreciate the, uh, fiscal, uh, comments made by, uh, Councilmember Spies. I think I'd like to challenge you to take, uh, either this program or something very similar to it. And this is kind of relative to what, uh, Vice Mayor Soon was talking about and figure out how do we target that missing middle, uh, for the housing? Um, that's, that's, uh, not a single family, that's not, uh, necessarily multifamily. It might be ownership, might be billed for rent, but that it's, it's in that, you know, 10 to 15, uh, range. And so that we can start getting a diversity of housing stock and, and really, you know, because I think what I've heard anyway, uh, and a lot of it is apocryphal, but, uh, that, you know, the, the financial markets have not yet proven as a concept that in a suburban market, that type of development, uh, pencils well. And so maybe we need to provide the program that bridges the gap so that we can have a couple of successes under our belt and make that a reality. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Wen, did you have any questions or comments?
No, but I'll go ahead and introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only in ordinance repealing and replacing Elgro Municipal Code Chapter 16.120, deferral of certain impact fees and amending section 16.97.050, timing of collection of fee secret exempt.
Second.
And with the motion in the second for the ordinance of item 9.1, I will start the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Wen.
Aye.
Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Soon.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Ordinance of item 9.1 will pass 5-0.
Motion two.
Second.
With the motion in the second for the resolution of item 9.1, I'll start the roll call vote with Councilmember Wen.
Aye.
Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Soon.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of item 9.1 will pass 5-0.
All right, next item, our council comments, reports and future agenda items. I'll start with Councilmember Wen.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Councilmember Spies.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Councilmember Hume.
As much as I would love to continue the trend, I do have one thing that I'd like to ask my colleagues for consideration about, um, and I'll bring it forward, uh, you know, with, with some, some caveats. Nothing to report relative to meetings, everything other than the connector and Santa Joaquin JPAs has been canceled. But, um, this idea was brought to me and, um, back when we had rotating mayors and I was the mayor, I came forward with the, um, Veterans, uh, Street Naming, uh, Program. And, uh, you know, obviously a big component of that program is, is, uh, anyone in the community who suits up, whether they're armed services or a first responder. And so the idea was brought to me, uh, to rename Laguna Palms Way, uh, Lenahan Way. So one, I would ask whether or not there would be consensus to, to take a look at that. But if we were to do that, there are a couple of caveats. The first caveat is that we would check with the family, uh, number one, and make sure that that's something that they would even, uh, support or endorse. Number two, that we would check with the department and see that that's something that they would, uh, like to see, uh, as they report to work every day or not like to see as they report to work every day. And then if those boxes get checked, uh, to look at, I, I'm pretty sure that the City of Elk Grove might be the only addressed, uh, buildings on Laguna Palms Way. So from a procedural logistical standpoint, I think it would be, uh, fairly easy, uh, thing to get accomplished.
I would absolutely be in support of looking into that and being supportive regardless. I think it's a, it's a wonderful honor and tribute and recognition and.
Yeah, I'd be interested in looking at it. I think the biggest challenge to it would be making sure that residential didn't somehow get affected. But I do believe you're correct in that I'm, I don't know that there are any residentials on Laguna Palms Way, so.
There definitely isn't a residential because it runs from Laguna Springs to, uh, West Stockton.
Yeah.
On the other side of Laguna Springs, it turns into Red Fox.
Right.
So I, I love the idea, Councilmember Hume. I was actually just talking about that with my husband. Um, as you know, my husband rode with Officer Ty Lenahan. And, um, he shared with me that everybody knew that right off of Bradshaw, there's a street there that Officer Ty Lenahan was there every single morning. That was his spot. That was his thing to make sure that folks slowed down. And I'll have to ask my husband what street that was, but he and I was, we were talking about that. And he said he thought that would be a really good opportunity because that was known to be his spot and he was always there. You know, he took that road in to, um, to work every morning. But for whatever reason, that morning, he decided, you know, to, to take the freeway. And so we talked about that and, and he shared with me, I just didn't know when was the, the right time to bring up if we could even do that. And so I'm glad you brought it up. I think it's a wonderful idea. I just, um, would offer a, a second, um, option for a location where Officer Ty Lenahan was known to, you know, to always be at. Um, and that everybody knew that that, that was, that was his spot. If we could do that, I don't know the process of who we'd have to go through for it.
Was that in a residential? Is that, does it have more complications? Like this, if this one only has City Hall.
Yeah.
It would be, you know, because changing an address and all that kind of stuff. So I don't know, but I'd be interested to know what it is. And if there's not a tremendous impact. But, um, his, for me personally, where he came to serve every, you know, every day. And it's our first fallen officer. I think that seeing that every day as you pull in is, is a good reminder of, um, just how special he was. And so, I mean, I'm just speaking for myself that I, I, I think it's a, it's an option to look at, but not knowing where it is and it has a greater impact with residential, commercial and so on. Here at least, um, if it's just us, it's an easier, but I would be interested to know what the family and PD and others think as well. But the fact that we're honoring him in, in such a way and that we're thinking about that is, is wonderful. Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Soon, I thought you said something.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I just also want to thank you, Councilmember Hume, for, for bringing this up. And I, I wholeheartedly support it, but I wanted to emphasize your two caveats because, you know, we all want to honor, uh, Ty and, and, uh, do, you know, something, you know, that is that much respect, but his family, of course, and, and his brothers and sisters, uh, on the force, really. You know, I think know best, and so I would love to hear, um, their input. But I think that it's a great idea. I look forward to hearing more. And, you know, we'll explore the location while we're at it. Thanks.
Councilmember Spies, did you already say something? Yeah. Was there anything else?
I already weighed in. I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. I was supportive, so.
Yeah, yeah. And while we're looking at this, um, I have had a few residents reach out. Um, if it's not a street naming, can there be some sort of other memorial out near PD? And what that would look like, a community-led effort. But there's been a number of folks that have reached out, um, to have some sort of a permanent, dedication, either a statue, what many, many folks shared many ideas. But I'm glad that we're thinking along the lines of honoring him in a more profound way. So I look forward to hearing back. Um, is, is that the city manager who will do the investigation? Care, I saw, is your camera on?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. We can certainly look into that. We'll work closely with the police department to answer some of those questions that Councilmember Hume brought up. And I'll also look at the current program guidelines. I do think that there's a provision in there that, um, an individual has to be deceased for a period of time. But it is our, it is our rules and regulations. So when, when we return it, we can kind of note that and waive that provision in the program, if I remember correctly.
Mr. Davis, did you say, I see your camera on. Were you going to say something?
No, I just was here in case somebody had a question for me. We, we greatly appreciate the thought, uh, and the sentiment for sure. So we will work with the city on, uh, determining what's going to be best for, for Ty and his family in our city.
Great. Thank you. We look forward to hearing that feedback. Um, I have nothing to report, um, but I do want to do a shout out to Nell Ranta, who turned 100 years young today. And I had the honor, so I was a little late to our special meeting. I was presenting her a key to the city. And it was great to see the outpouring of support from the community. The fire department brought the fire engine by, and the fire chief was there. There was just a lot of folks from the community celebrating, um, her. So it was great to be a part of that. And I want to thank Carolyn Cohen for making that happen in literally a few hours. I was made aware of this, um, late, late last night. So I contacted Jason Lindgren and then shortly after Carolyn, uh, to see what we could do. And the magic happened. We have amazing staff who did great things in just literally a few hours so that we could honor her on her special day as she was celebrating with her friends and family. So thank you for that. So that's all I have for the report. Uh, for the adjournment, um, I do want to adjourn in the memory of a great Algrovian, someone who I got to meet a few years ago, a great resident of our city, a gentleman, a beloved father. That's Kevin Spies' father, Mr. David Spies. May you rest in eternal peace. May you, your memory be a blessing to you and your family, Kevin. We're all here for you. He was a great man and just thank you and hope your mom is holding him strong. We're here for you and your family if you need us. But tonight I ask that we adjourn in the memory of David Spies. Spies, sorry, can't speak right now. I'm fumbling. Thank you. Good night, everyone.